Okay. So the epigenetic inheritance. Within the body. It choose of the same bar body each time.
Yeah, within the body, yeah, it won't switch over.
Because. There's like two forms of epigenetic inheritance, right, the. From parents and then from body.
Yeah, those are very distinct, the one that we know. A lot about is from cell to cell. Uh, that is uh, each cell. Ultimately, your cells all arrive at a final differentiated state. Although there can be local stem cells for just to support one population and it's this stage of differentiation is not complete. So um. But yeah, that's that's the one. One sphere of epigenetic inheritance. You're just talking about when the cell passes on to daughter cells. And that includes all the um. All the other stuff that just concerns the. Chromatin geometry. And um. Or the methylation of the cytosines in the CPG island.
The CPG islands, those are kind of in all mammals and they're just repeated. Cytosine guanine um. Nucleotides that are methylated, correct?
Yeah, well, the cytosine is.
Guanine is not.
Right.
Okay, so. The HG islands. Are just high concentrations of CG nucleotides with the Cs being methylated. Does the CPG islands?
Yeah, you said something else.
Or they say, sorry. But like the takeaway from that is just they're just. Repeated sequence of the cytosine and guanine where the cytosine is methylated.
Yeah, it's not exactly like it's not just a repeated sequence of CPG. It's not just CG CG CG. No, I did, you answered it.
So and then with age, the methylated cytosines. Their methylation will continue to grow.
Well, apparently it does, it's obviously it does, it's like the genes accumulating more.
It's obvious how it happens, we just don't know why.
Yeah, we don't know why, we don't know if it signifies anything and I I it's really hard to believe that it actually is changing the regulation gene anymore. Cause it would be like, oh, it was shut down before, but now it's getting even more shut down.
Is cytosine the only nucleotide that gets methylated?
No, there's something that I never told you about, where something else gets methylated and you don't need to know that this exam.
Okay, sounds good.
But it is not, well, it's. It's a kind of epigenetic inheritance, but uh. It's a different sort, it's not not related at all to this, it's not really part of gene regulation.
So. Methylated CPG. Islands, Oliver was methylated CPG islands stop transcription, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a male way of shutting down a gene.
What's the point of the phosphate, though? Did we just say that?
See, that's what I tried to explain to you guys. It makes no freaking sense.
Okay.
Okay, because because there's a phosphate between any two. Any dinucleotide. That's what connects.
Oh, that's right, yep.
So so like, why say, why not just say CG island?
Well, my question.
I don't know how to get started.
Why, why even put the G in there when the cytosine is the only thing that's methylated?
Because it always it always travels with a G, and if it's just a C without a G, it's not gonna be part of that thing and never get methylated.
Okay, so methylated.
CPG islands are islands where it's not. I'm just telling you, it's not just CG 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 CG, it's a whole bunch of DNA there, and it's got like inserted. CG CGs all over the place, and there's plenty of Gs by themselves and there's plenty of Cs by themselves. And As and Ts and everything else, well, that's it. And but there's just the CPGs and those are the parts that get. Methylated on the cytosine. On both strands, and then that.
Now, bar bodies, they are not methylated, they are condensed?
They're very condensed and they have a completely different mechanism which you didn't talk about.
Okay.
For shutting down.
I thought I'd make sure that I don't like use the wrong. Analogy or something on the exam.
When he first came and you talked about um. How you don't choose the, you choose the X chromosome, but you don't, but then you said you don't actually choose X chromosome, what were you asking?
Okay, so that has to do, it's an example of epigenetics, so like, the X chromosome from from cell to cell within the body. It will, it will decondense the X chromosome before being replicated. But then after replication, it will condense that X chromosome back into a bar body. And so.
And that's part of epigenetics.
That's part of epigenetics.
When did we talk about?
Wait, so so at what point did you have it recondensing?
After replication.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
What would happen is.
It says like late S phase, it re- it um.
Can we draw this on the board?
Yeah. There's nothing to draw.
Okay.
You got a bar body.
Yeah.
And you can see that's one chromosome that you can actually see in interface.
Yeah.
Cause it's just sitting there, except for the S phase of interface. It's just sitting there as a little little compact blob, which gets stuck over on against the nuclear membrane. To kind of get it out of the way. Then when S phase comes. It will actually decondense. It'll be the last part of, because everything has to be. Uh, kind of processes have to be interrupted there for the DNA to be replicated. And and that thing is the last part of the DNA that's replicated is the the. If it's a female, is the inactivated X. Then it finally gets itself decondensed and replicated, and then everything goes back to being the way it was.
Yeah, it's recondensed.
But when you have. Your um. When you have your mitotic. Your metaphase plate. All chromosomes look like chromosomes, it's not a bar body then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then divides, then everything decondenses, and then at some point. It recondenses into the bar body. And somehow it knows that it's still the one.
Yeah, it knows.
How was that, how was calico cats a great example, is that part of the calico cat thing that we're talking about?
Yeah.
So how is, but I just don't understand how that's tied with epigenetic inheritance, like, I'm not really understanding the connection.
Cause there's a condition. There. That applies to that chromosome. Which is a gene regulatory condition.
Okay, so.
Shutting it down. Then. It never forgets that it's the one. So that means that information, there's information that is somehow passed to the daughter cell. To uh. With that chromosome, on top of that chromosome, or attached to that chromosome in some way. That flags that as the one. That's gonna have to be condensed.
Oh, that makes sense, okay, cause it's, cause epigenetic inheritance, it passes down the status. Status of all.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to get into how it does that, cause I never talked about that. It just is, it's a form of epigenetic inheritance, because it's. It's information beyond simply the. Code of DNA. That ends up. In the daughter cells from the mother cell.
And then when it goes um, when it goes. Into the sex cells, that's when. It isn't shut down because the the. The offspring can choose.
We're back on the bedroom.
I understand it.
So. What I was wondering, the other question I had was translocate. So. So for elongation, we have the binding of the next RNA, which I understand, the transfer of the polypeptide bond, which I understand. And then the third is the translocation, or not the translocation, but the translocate. Of messenger RNA, and it says, and I have underneath moves the RNA and T RNA. On, I don't even know what I was saying here, I don't know, I don't even know what I was writing, I can't even read this. Like, this is, this is my biggest problem, why I struggle studying, because half the stuff I write is like, like really terrible handwriting.
Really?
Yeah, I don't understand, and that's why I'm like, wait, what was I, what was going on in class at this point, because I don't remember. So can we just, can we talk about translocating, is it, is it just, is it just the, is it just the shifting of everything, is that what translocates?
I I I sort of mentally image like. If there was a tablecloth on this table. And you pull it, whatever is on it just moves right along, and everything's in the same position. Right, so think about the messenger RNA. And it's got something on the A and the P site, maybe on the E site, and then you just move it along. Such a way that the three prime end, the message is coming closer to the ribosome. Um, and those things, DRAs are there, they go over one codon along with it. That's translocation. One codon, it's like one jerky movement. You 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 seem surprised.
No, I'm not saying that the T RNA goes along with it.
So this new amino acid comes in here with the bandicar sequence. And then this whole thing has to jump over here, and then. This, so then once it's over here, this move E site, A moves to P, and the new transfer RNA brings new amino acid.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, this, then this goes over here.
You would think that this gets added to the P site, but it doesn't, actually. The whole polypeptide chain on the P site jumps over to join them, you know, acid on the A site. And then the whole transfer RNA goes into the P site.
Yeah, no, yeah, I knew that, okay, and that's called translocation?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just when, it's just when the polypeptide moves over to the A site, but then that gets tran, then that gets moved over into the um, P site.
It's when the polypeptide. Moves. From attachment to the A site. To attachment to the piece.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're saying though, so.
I think I get what you're saying, though.
We look here. We've got this polypeptide chain, and we've got this new transfer RNA coming in with amino acid. So this is gonna all come on to this A site right here. And that goes to exit, and then so the translocation isn't the swapping. Of the polypeptide, it's the swapping positions of the um. Transfer RNA.
Yeah, the transfer RNA with the attached polypeptide now moves over to the P site.
And it moves in the five prime direction over to the P site.
Yeah.
The, yeah.
Cause that's what I have written here, I just have.
In other words, the 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 five prime end is getting farther away from the ribosome.
Cause this is moving.
What'd you say?
The five prime end is getting farther away.
Yeah, and then the three prime.
How do you do, it's not, these are recopying notes, is that right?
I take, I do it quickly in class, and then I go home and I redo it.
But did you draw these things in class?
Yeah.
Did you color them in class?
No.
But all this drawing you did in class.
For the most part, yeah, I get outlines.
But you must be a pretty fast drawer.
Oh, wow. So this, this is the messenger RNA right here, and it's being fed this way while the ribosome is moving this way, they're both moving.
Yeah, yeah, you can look, you can look at it either way, that's why I always tell the rule. I'll tell you again. The only thing you have to remember is. You don't have to remember one of them as being moving and the other being still, just remember that the. Ribosome is always getting closer to the three prime end. Cause sometimes a ribosome is nailed down to the rough end of the particular, so it's definitely not moving. It's dull docked with a pore right there in the membrane. Pumping the protein through, so there you could say it's the mRNA that's moving. If we want to say it in a cytosol. Where it's not docked with the rough ER. Then this is just any way you wanna look at it, which one is moving, which.
That's what I was gonna ask, that's what I was confused about, another thing. So we have, what's the purpose, cause we can do translocation. I mean, we can do translation in the cytoplasm, like outside, right?
Yeah.
But then we can also do it pumping the protein, that mean the. To the ER, what's the purpose of pumping into the ER?
Because some proteins. Are ready to just fold up and go. And other proteins. Uh, have to get modified before they're actually functioning. What's it have to get modified? Get pumped into the rough ER, that's what it's there for, so it's a compartment where these modifications take place. So not all proteins have to go through that. So not all of them.
Do you need to know those modifications? We didn't talk about them.
No, we didn't.
There's no, that's a rough ER where modification is necessary.
Um, I don't think I even explained that, I probably should have explained that, but nobody asked me why they do that, so.
Can we talk about, I feel like we've probably told you three times now. When is GTP used in the elongation site, it's used to bind the the messenger RNA to the amino acid. Correct?
Uh, it's used to, it comes in. Piggybacking on the transfer RNA, the charge transfer RNA with the new amino acid. Comes in with that and kind of blocks it down. And then. Gets defusforalated in that process and leaves. That's the first GPT, GTP that's used, the first elongation factor is.
To go into like the A site.
Yeah.
Then, okay.
Right.
And then it's used to translocate.
Right.
It's used to bring it in, and it's used to move the sequences.
Yeah, well, they're two different elongation factors.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the first one then attaches the Q RNA with the amino acid, and the second one. Moves, does a translocation.
So, yeah, GP, you're talking about one GP, GTP is used.
Yes.
Yeah, but to bind the next tier name and then for translocation, yep, that's what I have.
Translocation was something different than I thought it was, but thank you.
Remember that it's also um. Has a chromosome meeting, so genetic meeting. Were translocation.
Yeah, of the. Swapping of the chromosome when it breaks, and there's a double bonded break. And then it invert.
Yeah, there's two different types of translocation, there's the one with the, in the ribosome, and then there's the one with the um.
Yeah, the same word, it means both things, just.
I think I had on the last video. The last YouTube video. It's honestly really helpful, like. Going in and listening for each question when I do the YouTube video.
How um, how do I access that? How do I access that video then?
The YouTube video?
The translocation video.
I sent out a link for YouTube video. Oh, I mean, just. I mean, just switch up my name in your Gmail and all the emails that I sent out with my name will pop up.
Okay.
I feel like it's not much that, I feel like, I just feel kind of, I feel good about it, you know, cause like, I feel like after spending like an hour after each class, like talking about this stuff, it's like a form of studying for me. So like. When I read this stuff, I've already asked you all the questions I was confused about, you know what I mean? So kind of just like, listening and having minor questions I have. They talked about how Mendelian transmission. Like how that's even possible.
And more complex species are smaller and have to live in the nucleus. Correct, it's like the turtle. We can't live without them, and they can't live without them.
You're right.
Yeah.
They are semi-autonomous.
Semi-autonomous of the word. Um, they only help the mom, all mitochondria, it just comes from mom. Okay, so then there is that, so if if not all of mom's um mitochondria are mutated. Then she can pass on. The mitochondria will be the quicker in extent, correct, depending on what. What, I don't, I don't.
Well, she's got a population of mitochondria which can be different from each other within the same cell.
Okay.
And so that can vary all over her body, actually. So she can have a term line where. Sometimes she can pass on more of the good ones or. More of the bad ones.
Okay.
Um, and and so. And it could, it could be that she's unaffected by it, because it's more concentrated in new germ lines. This is a really sloppy part of having an endosymbiont for a cellular, you know. That reproduces itself. And dozens, isn't reproduced by the um. Entirely by the nuclear genome. So it's, it's a little bit, that's, they're, they're the semi-autonomous. It can get. Genetically messed up with a small number of genes it has.
Okay.
I I found a really good example. Um. Couple days ago. Uh, which I'm gonna put in in that lecture on mitochondria from now on. Of um, just a case study. Of uh, you know, the protein complexes in the electron transport chain. Um, some of those proteins are coded for. By the mitochondria for itself, and it makes them in inside itself. Others, like they, like they say. Is our our proteins that are coded for in the nuclear genome. And so like, those are the ones that have Mendelian inheritance. Where you have copies of the thing, one copy from mom and one copy from dad. It's coding for some of the, some of the components in that electron transport chain. So this is another way you can, I mean, I just found. Um. Another condition that you can get either way, because those protein complexes are actually multi-component. That's why they call them protein complexes, it's cause that each one is coded for by several genes. The the products which come together to form that like complex one, especially complex one. So there's a condition in complex one. Where, this is some, in some medical journal article that came across. Where they were dividing the people up into those who had. A problem with that protein complex because of a component that was coded for the nucleus. And other people who had a problem, the same problem, because the thing didn't, didn't work again, but it's because of other protein components that were coded in the mitochondria. So, and the symptoms were the same. But you didn't know which it was until you sequenced those genes in the nucleus. And then you would know which it was, I thought it was really cool, and then I'm gonna add that to the. Lecture from now on, just because it's kind of a concrete example.
Um, and then I also have another question, so about the endo symbioses. You say that they migrated um into the genomes of their host. Because the genes are better protected by their host, yeah, that's better DNA damage repair mechanisms.
Right.
But I don't quite understand that, if they're replicating themselves and they're living on their own. What, what benefit does it do them? You know what I mean, to be living somewhere that has better damage repair to itself, because it's not, it's not like it's a, it's not like it's repairing. Mitochondria.
No, but the mitochondria consist of products that are coded for somewhere in DNA. And so the DNA is inside the mitochondria, and most of it is now in the nucleus.
So we code for mitochondria, the ones they're coded for, they just do their own thing?
What?
I'm just saying like. If we code for them, how are they, how is they? Not like every other thing else?
How are they not like what?
How are they not like the other organelles?
Because they do code for some of their own. Protein. The other organelles in the, in the cell. Uh, are made of nothing except products. That are coded for in the nucleus.
Okay.
So they can disappear and be recreated again from scratch.
So mitochondria, they don't code for themselves completely?
They they code for very little. The the, if you, if you look at all the proteins that go into. Mitochondria, most of that information now exists in the nucleus. The only things that the mitochondrial genome codes for is some of the components. That you see in the electron transport chain and some of the components in ATP set base. Then and and, so that's all it's got left in its own genome.
So another question about the four possible sources of genetic disease, like mitochondrial diseases.
So. Four possible what?
The four possible sources of genetic mitochondrial diseases.
Can you say just a word about the first two? One, I think he said not even worry about the.
The somatic ones?
Yeah.
So I I'm looking here at my notes, and I have four possible sources of genetic disease in the mi, like of mitochondria.
Sources.
Sort sources.
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 I know, I know you're playing with it, I know you're messing with me, okay.
It's like the the the, there's this echo in this room.
You know, do you hear like the words squeaking up in the ceiling?
No, where you have mice or something, sounds like it.
It sounds annoying, I think it's like a fan. Do you hear it? Okay, so. We have. Four possible sources of genetic mitochondrial diseases, and two of them are germline cells, two of them are somatic.
Sources, well, first of all, you can have a mutation in the mitochondrial DNA.
Yeah, and then you can also have a mutation in the, in the nuclear genes that code for the mitochondria.
Right.
Yep, and those are, and then. If you have those in your germ line cells, then those are inherited.
Well, if you. Yeah. You're right, uh, you could have it, it could be somatic.
But if you have it in your, but if you have them in your somatic cells and they don't get passed out to your. Okay.
So you could, so you could have it, it could be like spontaneous. It could be spontaneously in the nuclei of some cell. You're always acquiring mutations as you grow from a single cell to a. Aging. Multi-trillion cell organism, you have cell clones arising that are mutated. And one of those mutations could be in the nucleus, which affects in a genome, which affects the mitochondria. So that could be a localized region where your mitochondria aren't, aren't working. Um. Yeah, but it could be, you have the same story except the mutation is in the uh. Mitochondrial DNA.
And there's, there's less mitochondrial DNA, there's more nucleus DNA in us and like your karyotes.
Well, if you count the number of genes, there's many more genes in the nucleus, but if you count the mass of DNA, there's a whole lot of DNA. In the mitochondria, cause there's thousands of them. So that one genome is repeated over and over and over again, when they started getting DNAs. Out of organisms and sequencing it, a place where they began with, with the, with the mitochondrial genome, because you can get so much DNA that. Says the same thing over and over, you get, you get many genomes out of one cell.
Okay, but I was, I was wondering, so if you get, if your germ line cells have any sort of mutation, whether it's in the nucleus or the mitochondria.
Right.
And then you pass that down to your offspring, will they now have? Will they have the?
Yeah, that's, that's two, that's two of the four right there.
Yeah, well, and but let's say you pass it down, so the, from your, they're in your germ line, the mutations are in your germ line cells, you pass them down to your offspring, will your offspring have the mutation in their germ line cells or in their somatic?
Cause every single cell in their whole body, term line or somatic, will have whatever they.
So both, they'll have both, somatic and germ line mutations.
Yeah. Yeah, either way, what you had in one cell line, germ line, and maybe not anywhere else in your body. Suddenly becomes the only thing in the offspring.
Okay.
Whether you're talking about nuclear or mitochondrial.
Okay.
Yeah, that's your four sources.
So.
The four sources of the populace.
The most basic definition of transcription factors are just any proteins that help in transcription, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that's good enough, it's a very vague, all-inclusive term.
Um. I always wanna say translation, but it's transcript.
Translation is different from translation.
Yeah, translation is the reading of the messenger RNA. Um, okay.
I have that one question, I'm trying to find it in my notes so I can. Ask. Oh yeah, his stones, and there's like H two A, H two B, all those lovely things.
Yeah, well, H three and H two B one.
And there's something specific, so in H three, we have. CNPA, sen, sen thing, I don't know how you pronounce that, used in centromeres. Helps make central, yeah, central mirrors, and then macro H two A. Is, has a macro domain completely, where completely represses transcription and found in constitutive and facultative. I might remember those names, okay, and then. Um. No, there is a question that we talked about earlier from the parent, um. Where we have. What is IGF two, protein hormone that promotes growth in embryo? Where is that question? I had a, there's like something where like if you have. You have the two. I had a, there's like something where like if you have, you have the two parents. You have like the mom and dad, and, or maybe that's actually imprinting, I can't remember. I think I, I think, I think I am, but I'm trying to find the diagrams that I drew, because those will help me. Spark my memory of what I'm talking about.
It's not, it's epigenetic inheritance. I mean, yeah, it's the kind that is passed on from parents to offspring.
So. So I can know when being an example, so that would be, I mean, that would be like the natural everything.
Uh, yeah, that is by methylation. But we don't know if that's the only kind of epigenetic inheritance passed on.
I am a little bit confused, so, so we say that, um, the methylization is passed on to the offspring. So like, my whole entire life, I'm accumulating more and more methylated, um, cytosine. Um, but I wouldn't wanna pass on that already methylated. So, because they need to restart and regrow.
Right, yeah, we went over that, that's, that's, that's all gets clear, that's not the part that gets transmitted. The differentially methylated regions. Is what is passed on.
Okay.
But that's only after it's re-methylated in the making of gametes. But it still is passed on to children from parents.
So when?
But the rest of that stuff, that graph, that tells how old you are, that's not what's passed on.
Okay, that was honestly all that you've done, but it's still not quite there, so. You're saying that like when you go to form gametes, everything is un-methylated. Except for, everything's un-methylated and then the gametes form. Or the, 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 the egg would form. And then you have designated methylated regions, which is like the mom's poster. We go back to our analogy from the other day.
Oh, let's not, let's not use that analogy, just, that is just to get the idea.
So everything's un-methylated, and then you are gonna form this gamete. But you wanna methylate some cytosine.
Some says, those, those are the, uh, differentially methylated regions.
Differentally methylated, that are passed on from generation to generation regardless.
They, they get passed on, like all the genes get passed on from generation to generation. But the way that they get methylated, when they aren't passed on, depends on which sex you are.
Okay. The sex determining, um. Metha- methylation.
It's not sexy.
It's not sexy, no, 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 it's. It's not sex determining, sex determines what type of.
Right, right.
Yes, okay.
Um, I, I found the things, um, so. I have here, the same gene can be pre-methylated in different ways in eggs and sperm, so is pre-methylated the imprinting again?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that free methylation, that's, that's just my term.
For imprinting.
I mean, you can use that, I guess, it's pretty clear, I guess it's not really a. The, uh, not really wrong to say that, it's just that. Um, the usual term.
Okay, and I have, and then underneath I have female, same gene. But maternal methylation of gene and gametes, and then male, same gene paternal methylation.
Right.
And then, so I'm just like going through my notes, and then. The offspring retains the methylation patterns transmitted from parents, and we, oh, and that's what I was wondering. So if, if you become. So the offspring retains the methylation patterns transmitted from the parents, so. If you were to have a offspring and they are, they, you know, then their sex, because, you know, they become a female sex, right? Um, and then, do the females get their mother's pre-methylated DMRs?
They get mothers and fathers.
Both.
Don't you remember me saying, this does not have anything to do with what sex you are? You get the males and females, both get to get them pre-methylated in the same way. Uh, there's one way from their father and one way from their mother.
And then, but then once the sex is determined is when you get, is when your body chooses whichever one to pick, is that what you guys?
When the gametes are made. Then, you erase everything. And if you're a female, you methylate everything, all the DMRs, the female one, and if you're a male. You pre-methylate all these DMRs.
Based off whether it's from mom or dad. It's just based off of, I'm female, so I'm gonna methylate this from mom and this from dad, and so on and so forth.
Oh, I think I know what you're saying.
I was kinda thinking like. This is from mom, so I'm gonna methylate it because I'm a female, but it's not like that, it's like. You're gonna methylate, methyl, I can't say it. You're gonna methylate this one from dad and this one from mom because of your gender.
You're going to methylate them all the way that all females methylate them.
So, but not, but you're.
Not in your family, just that's the way they have been doing it ever since the cutations.
So you're not gonna, so you, you start off with the, your father's and mother's methylation. Uh, you know, that was passed down.
Right.
But when you finally have your, and you're, like you said, in the germ line cells, when they finally are like, okay, we're, we're female oriented, like, you know. We're female now, so there, are they just only gonna specifically choose the methylation from the females, or are they gonna do both of male and?
No, 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 they're just gonna do it one way, your way, your sex.
My sex.
You just have to remember the fact that you're not normal unless you have. A dad's genes that have, that, honestly, I don't think we even talked about that when you talked to genetics. Talking about the differentially methylated regions. Yeah, I don't recall talking about methylation much. No, I, 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 cause I'm just sort of tuning in what we went over when, when you were in there. We didn't talk about the thing we're talking about now. You might have gotten somewhere else, but we just didn't have time to stick it in, in that, in that, uh.
Well, you're lucky, it's hard, my brain's not understanding.
Look, let me tell you, the first fact you need to remember. In that, and if you just remember this, you won't ask the other questions then. First of all. No human being is normal, you have one of those, if, if you, if you have, if this gets messed up. You will have one of those syndromes that we looked at.
Yeah.
With Reitman, the Silver Russell, no, or.
Angelman, that's the only one, you know, can I tell you something? I saw a video of like these babies. It was like a, some video, whatever, it was like some mom with her kids, and it looked like the kids had Angelman syndrome. Kind of, cause they had the triangle face and like that, that exact, like, or not Angelman, or whatever, whichever one, it was Russell's. Silver Russell, whatever syndrome, has like the triangle face and everything, and I was like, that looks exactly like the picture.
Like really diminutive?
I don't know, all I know is that their face was literally triangular, and then they had like really like wide. Eyes, and I was like, I wonder, and I literally instantly thought, I wonder if that's that syndrome.
Yeah. Sorry, no, okay, well.
I should have, I should have taken it like screenshot, but like, is this the syndrome?
Here's the thing you have to remember. To be normal. Every human being, and this has nothing to do with their male or female, has to have. A one gamete that is methylated in the way that males methylate. Differentially methylated regions. Plus one gamete where all the differentially methylated regions are methylated in this. Opposite way, which is the way that the other sex parent methylates. One from a mom and one from a dad. This is, just to put a point on it, this is one of the potential barriers, it's in a way, of having people ultimately. Through, all this can probably be overcome, like if two women wanna have a baby. Where one provides one gamete and the other provides the other gamete. Or if two men wanna have a baby, where one provides one gamete and the other provides the other gamete, and it's perfect melding. But they can't, they're not gonna be able to make that happen until they can. Actually control the production of gametes and the, and the methylation of differentially methylated regions. You cannot be normal unless you have one normally methylated, normal for a male, methylated gamete. One normal for a female, methylated gamete, but when, then when you are producing gametes. You're not like taking, like, oh, this one, this one has to be, this one I, I got from my dad, and I'm a female. So I can't pass that one on. Uh, cause I'm only supposed to be passing on the ones that, that, uh. Or if you're the female, their methylated way has to come down from a female. You know that myosis doesn't do that, myosis doesn't have the ability to pick alleles. Uh, everything is random, so what you have to do is you have to erase all of it. And then as a female, methylate all of it as a female, or if you're a male, erase all of it. And then methylate all of it as a male, it methylates. You have to give one, both versions of methylation for you to be normal. That's the essence of those diseases that are caused when it's not, it doesn't work out like that. So if you remember that you, to be normal, have to have one from dad, one from mom. Then you know that it can't be when you come to make your own gametes, that you're just passing them on. At random, cause otherwise you'd be a female, and you don't know whether you're passing on a differentially me- methylated region. With male methylation, the female methylation.
And so you're, but, and, okay, and I. Ah, shoot, I already forgot my answer, hold on, I mean, my question. Um, so when we erase all of them, and that's what, that's what it is, um, so the imprinting is, so when you erase all of them, then you still. Like your germ line cells or whatever, still know which ones to.
No, they don't know anymore.
They don't know anymore, once you erase them, I don't know, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that was the purpose of what imprinting was, it's trying to, to kind of like. Sure, you erase them, but those important DMF Rs are still there, I mean, DMFs are.
See, that's where, that's where there's an interruption in the epigenetic inheritance, in the sense that. You start all over again, methylating them just as a female, in your case.
Okay. Okay, I think I got that, and if I don't, I will re-watch this video multiple times until I, until I, because I feel like I understood what you're saying, okay? And then the color. I think I'm like pretty set on this so far. And when you see, see bands, include centromeres, but as a whole middle region of chromosomes. Which is, so C bands are constitutive heterochromatin.
Yeah.
Okay. And. Constitutive is. Uh, dominant bar bodies, only sleeping can be activated when you, oh, no, no, that, that's facultative, constitutive is junk DNA, it doesn't contain important. Info, dead, C bands, long arm of Y chromosome, okay? There's just a lot, I think there's a lot more things I have to remember for this example. Yeah, a lot more. Than like last exam. I mean, maybe, um.
Well, uh, there's, I don't know, not really, I think the hardest step is at the beginning.
At the semester? You're saying you think the beginning is.
At the beginning of semester, yeah.
Oh, what are mark's side group added to DNA? Oh, marks are the side groups added to the tails, right? No, are, wait, are marks added to the tails?
Yeah.
Of the histone.
So the histone protein is on DNA.
Of the histone protein, not the.
Cause histones have amino acid tails, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then lysine likes to bind to those, right? Is that right?
Lysines are the amino acids to which the marks are bound.
What, lysine?
Lysines in the tails of the, uh, the.
Yeah, most common side groups on tails of histones are lysine, positive charge. Shutting down, methyl positive can condense chromatin, acetal neutral, control chromatin and promote transcription. Always, something from, always, what did I say, always something from N terminal end? I don't know why I were, always count from N terminal end, is that what?
Well, that's just the fact that, that you always number the amino acids starting in the internal end.
And it's five prime, right? N terminal and C terminal, it's five prime.
Five prime is, is nucleic acids. Has nothing to do with proteins.
No.
Proteins are N terminal and C terminal.
Okay.
I don't know what I was writing here. Um, so methyl positive can condense chromatone, acetal neutral, what was I saying here? Cause methyl, cause the, the lysines can bind to methyls.
Yeah, uh, the lysines are the amino acids to which. Most, but not all of these marks are edible. The marks are things like acetal or methyl, or, um. A whole bunch of others in the list that, and they had phosphates.
So, IGF two, I believe is an example of imprinting. So the mother's copy is shut down by methylation and the father's copy does all the work for the two. But I'm thinking like, won't that depend on gender, or is that just period? For the, um, the insulin like growth factor two.
Oh, the, the mouse thing.
Yeah, you said the person.
Yeah, that's an incomplete example, because it doesn't show you what happens if you only get the one parent.
You're saying that the mother's copy is shut down regardless, so you only get the father.
You're right.
So the mother is.
So you only get, so you need to have a functional copy from the father, or you don't get anything, and then.
And then you become twerked, okay? But this is not an example of imprinting, cause it doesn't depend on sex.
No, it is imprinting.
It is imprinting, it's just not.
It's a little different from the, the medical examples that I gave. It's actually a lot different, because it only, I, I, I think probably, if you, um. Well, actually, I, I don't even know what to think about what happens if you double those. Uh, of, of the dad's version. It didn't, didn't show that phenotype, so it's an incomplete example, which is not good for when you're just learning this. But like for the other ones that I gave, the, the.
Though.
Those, they have a distinct abnormality. Whether you get doubled up with a father and no mother, or doubled up with a mother and no father. So, so I gave the, I gave the mouse, just because that is in Campbell book.
Okay.
But it is an example of imprinting.
Should we know the conditions and like whether the mom's copy or the father's copy is missing? Or just not?
Oh, you get that in medicals.
Or just know that the.
The, those, the syndromes, this, the, the symptoms are and all this stuff? No, that's, this.
Just know that there's opposite effects, whether the.
You will learn that amount of information every fifteen minutes in, in medicals. So you can wait till then.
What's the, what's multi-generation implement, implementing, is that the, when you have to have both? To be normal, I don't know what I, what is that, multi-generation implementing?
Imprinting.
Imprinting, why does he implementing?
I don't know.
My head hurts so bad, okay. Multi-generation imprinting is when you need both your mom and father's, um, methylations to be normal, right?
The only thing that we said about multi-generation imprinting, and I forgot this, this is at the end when I gave experimental results with the rats. Exposure to the vinclazol.
Thing of that has.
Oh, cause I didn't write anything for that, so I don't even know what it is.
Well. I don't know if I wanna go through that, because I don't think I'm gonna ask about it.
Multi.
I'll go through it.
I'm curious, yeah.
Well, they took all these pregnant rats. And they exposed them to vinclazol. See what happened, I don't know why they did this, but then they let that become a population. And they, every generation, they would take the, um. Um, the offspring and check the males. For their fertility factors, they were, they were not infertile completely, but they had lowered sperm count. And lowered sperm motility. So the sons of those mothers that were exposed had reduced, then there was a control group, that they didn't expose. They just kept them going in parallel, right? So you have two groups, two populations. And they're all coming on this side, experimental side, from mothers that have been exposed from pregnant to this fungicide. Then every generation, they test the sons, beginning with the first sons. And they find that the sons are, are the ones whose mothers were exposed. Have these reduced sperm motility and reduced sperm count. Then the next generation, they test them again. And there is no lessening of the infertility. That's been brought about, once again, so the grandsons still have some effect that they've inherited. From this original mother's, and they do it again and again, I forget how many generations it looks like the best. If I remember the graphs, about five generations, or maybe six. And they continue to have the reduced fertility. The males, it doesn't seem to be an effect that's passed down on the females. Or maybe they didn't know how to test for it. But there's definitely a reduction in fertility for. Or maybe they didn't know how to test for it, but there's definitely a reduction in fertility for the rats. Generation after generation, carried right on.
And then, but it's not, it's not lessened though, right, it's, it stays consistent, it's not like.
Right, it doesn't seem to be dwindling away, they can immediately lessen it, however. If they take the females. And so after generations of watching this, where the males have reduced fertility. Then they take the females in one cohort there. And they just get rid of the sons. And they cross these females to other males from the controls, where there was never any history of exposure. Then they have sons that are almost normal. It sort of looks like, you can't tell, they didn't do a large enough sample to tell exactly what's significant, but it looks like the males have. Almost lost. That trait, but there may have been some of it that was always, it passed on, but females, because it looks like it's still there a little bit. That largely wiped it out. And um, that last result is the little, the only thing that's significantly. Uh. Uh, statistically, let's say proven there, is that you have alleviated the uh, the anti-sperm or. Thing that's going on, that's affecting the males. Um, alleviated it, maybe not cured it, but alleviated. And so that means that the the the, on its face, it looks like it's the males that are passing this along. From the very beginning, maybe the females are not passing it on at all. That part is a little bit obscure, but the 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 dramatic part of it is that every generation.
And they were passing down the, the, the G G M Rs, right?
No, we don't know what was being affected, this might not involve the G M Rs at all.
That's a G M Rs.
It's not, it's, it's just, it's an example of wider field. Of epigenetic inheritance from between, through generations. And there are a bunch of other mysterious examples like that. So that was just, that's how we ended, it's like, we don't know how big this thing is of epigenetic inheritance, transgenerational.
Okay.
Um, what structures do you think will be most important for us to? Not to understand, but more just to draw, to replicate?
Uh, what structures? Um. Let's see.
Like, I'm sure like the meiosis, like that.
You know how to draw chromosomes, all right?
Two stick figures, got it.
Stick figures, but can you draw the right lines, stick figures?
I'm trying to remember this right here, I have like a chromosome like this, is it like? But what you mean, like a like a chromosome, just like that, like the.
I think he means more like.
No, no, that's not a stick figure, no, tell me, is that a stick figure?
Well, that's a stick figure in detail.
It's stick figure, I think, I think you're referring to more like that. Know that.
Yeah, that's all you ever need to answer any chromosome drawing question is a stick figure. Uh, I can't, never seemed to get that across.
I'm gonna end this now, because I don't want to. I think I, wait, hold on. How do I stop this?